Yeah, I got it. Any more son of man, it's true. Any more son of man, it's true. Any more son of man, it's true. All right. Yeah. All right. 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 They didn't respond. I'm gonna have you removed. I'm gonna have you removed. Excuse me? Excuse me, sir? What break in?
Welcome to the March 4, 2025 City Council meeting. 6:30 City Hall Chamber. We'll start with a prayer. Today's session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for a direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified, where we continue the legacy of our fathers. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be before the good of our city. We also pray for a special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, making it a better place to live and work. Amen. Switch the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tom. Mike.
Mayor Rock.
Here.
Councillor Scott.
Here.
Councillor Yem.
Here.
Councillor Belanger.
Here.
Councillor Chow.
Here.
Councillor Dakota.
Here.
Councillor Getchea.
Here.
Councillor Janess.
Here.
Councillor Mercia.
Here.
Councillor Noon.
Here.
Councillor Robinson.
Here.
Twelve present, eleven present.
Moment of silence. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for John T. Jack Dwyer Jr., former Sacred Heart parishioner, longtime foreman, Colley Stadium and Shed Park. John T. Jack Red Dwyer Jr., 81, passed away on Sunday, February 23rd, 2025, at Lowell General Hospital. Born in Lowell on September 27th, 1943, he was the only son of the late John T. Senior and Viola Kuchu Dwyer. Jack attended the Sacred Heart Grammar School, followed by the Sacred Heart School for Boys at Andover, until graduation. He then attended Lowell High School, graduated the class of 1962. Jack began his career with the city of Lowell's Park Department, spending 36 years, most of them as the perennial caretaker and foreman at Colley Stadium and later Shed Park. He was a parishioner of the Sacred Heart Parish until its closing, then later the Immaculate Conception Church. Right-held membership in the Lowell Lodge of Elks for over 55 years, also the East End Club in the Ancient Order of Hibernians. Jack is survived by his three sisters, Marjorie Chalouk, Claire McDermott, and Justin Reed, Justine Reed. He also leaves many nieces, nephews, and friends. Jack was the brother of the late Ruth Doyle and brother-in-law of the late Russell Doyle, Al Chalouk, Frank McDermott, and John C. Reed. I'd like to also offer a moment of silence for all those that have passed since our last meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Dr. Table, please. May our rest in peace. Two, may I address this 2.1 Communication Remote Zoom Participation Motion to Accept the Place on File by Councillor Janess, seconded by Councillor Mercia. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We couldn't get this done on the last week of our Black History Month due to scheduling, but anytime is a good time, or great time actually, to acknowledge those in the community that have been integral parts and continue to give back and do so much to positively impact so many. Tonight is no different. Tonight, we'd like to take the time to honor and offer an official citation for Sincilia Cindy Mitchell. In celebration of Black History Month, we recognize Sincilia Cindy Mitchell, a devoted community leader, mentor, and champion of service, whose impact on the Lowell community is immeasurable. Cindy's journey began in 1967, when her family moved from Douglas, Georgia to Lowell, Mass as part of the Great Northern Migration. Though the transition was challenging, it became a defining moment in her life, instilling in her a deep appreciation for community, resilience, and service. Her parents played a pivotal role in shaping her commitment to civic engagement. As founders of the Merrimack Valley Achievement Association, MVAA, the Black Genesis Foundation, and the Afro-American Council of Greater Lowell, they immerse Cindy in the civil rights movement, teaching her that true leadership comes from uplifting others. Following in her footsteps, Cindy dedicated 30 years to fostering children in Massachusetts, providing them with a safe and loving home. As a single mother, she expanded her family through the adoption of six children, embodying the power of unconditional love and support. Cindy's passion for youth empowerment led her to Lowell High School, where she spent 12 years mentoring students, advising the step team in Black Unity Clubs, and personally funding the revitalization of the Black History Month Balls. Her commitment ensured that Black students had a space to celebrate their heritage, identity, and achievement. The Mitchell family spirit of service continues through Cindy's work. She founded the Mary Scott Mitchell Foundation of Giving, an organization dedicated to supporting families in need, while her siblings established the Afro-American Community Collaborative. Together, they carry forward a legacy of advocacy, generosity, and empowerment. Despite her extraordinary contributions, Cindy remains. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Daniel Rocke and the entire City Council and residents of Lowell, in celebration of Black History Month, we celebrate Sincilia Mitchell for her unwavering dedication to family, mentorship, and community service. She's a true inspiration, proving that one person's kindness, perseverance, and leadership can transform countless lives, given this Fourth Day of March, 2025. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, it's an incredible honor to be appreciated and acknowledged. I guess when they told me I was gonna be honored tonight, I wanted to know for what. And I think it's because although I've done some things, in my opinion, I've not done enough. I guess my dreams for community is a little bit bigger than what I've accomplished. My love for working with youth has me dreaming of group homes, affordable tiny home communities, and all types of programs to guide them. Balls and galas are great, but I think, I ask myself, what else can I do? Fostering and adopting my children was a nice thing to do, but that has done as much for me as it has for them, and they continue to motivate me. I left Lowell for a few years and moved back to Georgia. And when I tell you I struggled to find community and never could, it was just unbelievable. Since being back, I have re-immersed myself into working with my siblings to see if I can make some of my dreams come true. Thank you all for thinking of me and what they say about there is no place like home, there is no place like Lowell. Thank you.
But the family were tremendous, and as they got older and the father got ill, the wife took over. Then when the wife got up in age, the children took over. This is a great family, and I am so honored to be here and congratulate all of you. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you, Councillor Mercia. I'm moving on to Section 3, City Cork 3.1. May I ask of the City Council regular meeting, February 25th, for acceptance? Motion to accept the place on file by Councillor Dakota, seconded by Councillor Getchea, as a fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. Not being 7:00 PM yet, we'll skip the general public hearings, we hit the City Council motions. 5.1, Councillor Janess, request City Manager provide counsel with update on the current status of Comcast franchise agreement.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Noon, Councillor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to refer this to the Tech and Utilities Subcommittee, which will meet on March 25th at 5:30 PM here in the council chambers.
Seconded by Councillor Getchea, as a fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Janess, for filing this motion. This is way for us as a council, as a city, to express our concern with the cut in franchise fee. 2023, they got more than what they get this year, $100,000 cut. That's a huge problem right now for LTC, and he looked to help them. That would be great. I know that they have built a house now to try to get the Comcast franchise fee, not only just consider the cable, but also look at the internet and streamline services as well, so that they can maybe get more from Comcast. So they got two checks from Comcast every year, but the last years or so, it's $100,000 different, and that's huge. And they provide service to our city in terms of the municipal board and the land board and stuff, so anything we can do to help them, that would be great. Thank you.
As a fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. 5.2, Councillor Noon. Request City Manager work with the State Delegation and Sign Department, State Delegation and Sign Department, on state and local way funding signage towards Cambodia Town.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Yem, Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion that filed by myself, Councillor, then Mayor Chow. This is a way for outsiders from Lowell, a way of finding signage that help people really find their way quickly and safely. A lot of people ask, you know, when they come to Lowell, they said, where am I? Where am I going? Those two answers would help make, if we can answer those two questions, would help make their travel to Lowell more comfortable and more peaceful in terms of moving around the city of Lowell. This is our way also to brand our city as where Cambodian Towns are. So anything we can do to help, maybe managers can reach out to the delegation in terms of helping from their end, and our city doing the same in terms of, you know, do what we can to help in terms of, for a way of finding signage. Thank you.
Councillor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Councillor Noon for the motion, and it is very important. It's a way of increasing tourism to the city of Lowell. Lowell is the second city in the United States that has Cambodia Town, similar to Long Beach, California. So by having a signage on the highway, Lowell connector, direct the people, and then also to the local road, direct people to where Cambodia Town is, that will be helpful for visitors to come to Lowell, to navigate and to go directly to Cambodia Town and enjoy the site and shopping and eating in Cambodia Town, which is another economic development for the city of Lowell. Thank you so much.
Councillor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think Councillor Yem just used the key phrase that I was gonna say also, for economic development, but also want to thank Councillor Noon for making the motion, for bringing up this motion again. He and I made some motions in the past, and I hope this will be successful this time with the plan that we're developing at Cambodia Town right now, with the parks, with the street that Lowell has been working on for the past couple of years. I think this is a good timing to have this be put in place. Thank you.
All the fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. 5.3, Councillor Noon. Request Mayor prepare proclamation recognizing the month of April as sexual assault awareness month. Seconded by Councillor Janess. Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, Mr. Mayor, the month of April is the National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. It is important time to speak out and stand with the courageous survivors and finally change the cultures that allow sexual violence to exist so far, for far so long. I think too that what we can help the local rape crisis services by getting involved on campus or volunteers online hotline, educate our social network about the sexual assault awareness and prevention. I think we do this as a city and help those who work on the front line to help the survivor is important. Thank you.
All the fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. 5.4, Councillors Noon and Robinson. Request City Manager provide an update on trash contract. No second needed. Gentlemen.
I have Councillor Robinson go first. Thank you. Again, we're looking for where are we on this, and I know in the past, we've had some challenges, and I just think, do we start looking at, you know, the different options on the table as far as do we need multiple service because some of the problems? It seems like we've worked out a lot of those wrinkles, and there's been some major improvements as the manager and his team has pointed out with the video monitoring systems installed in the trucks, and so they've been great allies, I think, currently, but I just think an update on this would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Robinson just stated that, you know, in the past, we have some difficulty with the company that we have now. However, the last five months or so, that the service has been improved. In the past, I thought of break it down into piece, you know, this is too big for one company to really carry the contract. Now, you know, I probably okay with continue with that service that we have, but let look at, you know, where we at with that service, because I know that the last couple of months when we've filed similar motions, talked about break it down, that we are not up in contract yet, that we just can stand for one year if I'm not mistaken, so want to report on that, it would be helpful.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Three to the council. Councillors, if it's okay, currently right now, we put together with DEP as well as a number of best practices that we put out an RFP for the first time in probably close to a decade. We have many responses that we're going through. So if I could leave it at that at this point, my hope would be coming back to you with an idea in the very near future. So, once again, working with the Department of Biometal Protection, as well as with our own team, putting a number of best practices in, and this really has been over a decade since we've done this. I'm very happy with the number of proposals that we received back, and obviously because we're still in, looking at these, negotiating, I probably need to keep it at that time. Keep it here at that time.
Councillor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rocke. I just want to say through you to the manager, thank you to your staff in the company, because when we first started on this council, it was kick every single day. We were getting missed stops, problems after problem after problem. I haven't seen one in a while, and normally they call, so I just want to say, yeah, I should have never said that, you're right, Mr. Manager, but I just want to say thank you to them, and thank you to your staff for the hard work that you've done, because I know we haven't gotten a lot in the inbox, so thank you again.
All the fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. 5.5, Councillors Noon and Robinson, request City Manager provide short-term plan to address the increase in violence in the city. No second needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought Councillor Robinson would agree with me that the motion speak for itself.
Yeah, Mr. Manager, I'd be curious, Mr. Manager, for stats on this, only because of my day job, you know, we haven't noticed it there, but I've seen unsolved crimes or something, but just got curiosity, like to see the maybe three or six month pattern. Thank you. All the fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. 5.6, Councillors Robinson and Noon. Request City Manager have the proper department identify high pedestrian vehicle traffic locations and bring forth recommendations to improve safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we have a couple areas in Centerville, and I'm sure there's a few that exist in all districts, that it's a situation that we're gonna see more of, I think, with the more development we do in key locations, there are already high pedestrian foot traffic areas, so any best practice recommendations or suggestions that the traffic engineer could bring forward to help try to mitigate that, whether it be lighting? I know Centerville, we're in a tricky position with the CSO work scheduled, so as far as permanent installations, that's really not on the table for right now, but anything even as simple as temporary speed bumps to help alleviate some of that would be another best practice, so thank you.
All the fair say aye. Opposed motion, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we possibly take 516 out of order?
Sure. All the fair say aye. Opposed motion passes on 56, 516. Motion by Councillor Dakota, take 516 out of order. Seconded by Councillor Mercia. All the fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. 516. Councillor Dakota, request City Manager allow two representatives of the Save the Smith-Baker Center group to enter the building for specific purpose of city-guided inspection of the interior contingent upon proof of a one-day insurance policy covering property. Seconded by Councillor Mercia, Councillor Dakota.
Thank you.
There's a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Clerk.
Dennis McCarthy.
Thank you very much. My name's Dennis McCarthy. I live at 216 Foster Street. I want to thank the councilors for allowing me the privilege to speak again tonight. This is important to the group to be able to get into the building and put our eyes on the condition, because then we could speak with confidence as to what the building, how the building currently stands. Even though we do have that structural report, being able to get into the building ourselves as an architect, as builder, as individuals that will be instrumental in transforming the space, we really feel it would be a tremendous benefit. We do have insurance in place, and so if this motion is able to go forward, we can forward that information regarding our insurance to the city, and we look forward to making sure that we get as much as we can from this visit, so that we can go forward and convince our sponsors and patrons to come forward and support this effort. If I could ask if we could allow President of our group, Christine McCarron, to be able to speak tonight as well?
Motion by Councillor Dakota, speak. Seconded by Councillor Yem. All the fair say aye. Opposed motion passes. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Rocke. City councilors, my name's Chris McCarron. I live in Tinsborough. I'm working my way back to Lowell. I was in Lowell Plan Public Matters when I first learned the plans for Smith-Baker. We were doing our bus tour through the city with Linda Durian, as a matter of fact, and our guide said, oh, unfortunately, that's one of the buildings we're gonna have to lose. As a real estate broker-investor who's done numerous renovation projects, I looked at the building, I've seen a lot of dilapidated buildings, a lot worse than Smith-Baker, and I didn't see anything from the outside that looked as if it would be impossible to save the building. You know, the roof isn't sagging, there's no splaying of the walls, there's nothing that would make you immediately think that, you know, oh, I'm afraid to go in there, or, you know, that it's just beyond hope. So I immediately started talking to people, people I'd met in the program, including City Manager Tom Golden. I was connected with Paul Rathayem, who connected me with Dennis and Brad and some of the other folks who you've met from the group, other people who had a passion for this historical and historically and architecturally significant building. We quickly formed a nonprofit, we got 501(c)(3) status, and we started applying for grants and accepting donations. Although we have got a grant, and we have actually already collected over six figures in donations, all of the big grants, all of the big foundations come back and say the same thing, they can't do anything unless we have control of the building, right? They're not gonna give us any money. We have talked to people, for example, TDI, where that building is perfectly situated, and what we're planning to do with it is exactly suited to what the TDI initiative is about, but they can't do anything unless we control the building. So as part of Lowell Plan Public Matters, we learned about the incredible vision that Lowell has, that allowed the city to be named a national park, the first city that was a national park, saw the transformation of the city from a lot of dilapidated mill buildings to beautiful condos and commercial centers, things that a lot of people would not have suspected if they, you know, people would have looked around and said, yuck, you know? But now, it's beautiful. We have the talent in our group. We've attracted fundraisers, architects, historians, scholars, restoration experts, and more into our group, and we have the talent to turn this building into a tax-paying community asset with a commercial kitchen, an event and performance venue, artists-in-residence, an art gallery on the exterior, co-working spaces, and a beautiful convergence of all the many cultures that make Lowell the special city that it is. We've been approached by We've been approached by the Lithuanian group, by the Lowell, Cambodia Town Lowell, sorry, and, and other groups who are interested in the space and who are interested in having their meetings there and having performances there as well. As you drive around the city, you see the banners that say, "Great Minds Think." I take that to mean that we question the status quo, that we think out of the box, and that we are willing to take on projects, big projects that have big goals and big ideas, and bring those projects to life. With that being said, you know that we have a smart team. You've, you've seen Dennis, you've heard other people from the group. And smart people don't like to waste their time on useless endeavors. The reason we're all still fighting for the building is because we believe, based on what we've seen from the exterior and what we've seen in the GAIL engineering study, that there is hope for the building. Now, if we go in there and we find out that it's really, it really is collapsing, that it really is dangerous, and it just doesn't make sense to try to save it, you know, you'll never have to see us again, right? If for no other reason than not having to listen to us every week, maybe you could just pass the motion. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Dakota.
Thank you. I have spoken many times with Mr. McCarthy and probably talked to him more in a month than I've talked to my wife, I think, at this point, so. And we've gone back and forth, but.
I know who feels sorry for. You were a hammer, right?
You know my wife, right? Okay. That I think this is a, a good compromise for the fact that I think that we really don't know what's going on in Washington at this point. And I know Ms. Byers, Rose isn't here, but Mr. Speedy, you might be able to chime in a little bit here, but that we really don't know what's going to happen with our HUD funding if, you know, once this RRFP goes out for demolition. I think we're still waiting quite a bit of time before demolition would happen and income housing, low-income housing happens. So I think there's plenty of time. Am I correct in assuming that at this point?
Thank you, Councilor. And thank you, members of the council. There is a little bit of time, although it's very uncertain. The last that we heard from HUD is that potentially there will be modifications to their staffing. We still don't know when that is going to happen and what that means and what that will mean ultimately for our funding. Where we are right now with the build, with the building itself is we're running this week the assessment for hazardous materials. We're hoping to receive that, that report either this week or the next one. And concurrently, we're working with Mass Development for a real estate technical assistant that will help us understand how this building could develop, including hopefully what happens if we address the facade. We don't know what that means yet in terms of the, the, the costs of this, which will also play a role in what the timing is for this. Ultimately for HUD, depending on the uses for this property, we wouldn't have to pay them back, just to remind the council, we, we used HUD funding to acquire this building back in the 60s. But the accrue, the accrualment of value is different today, right? The value that we paid back in 68 or 75, either of those two years when we got the building, is not the same today, right? And so we're trying our best to think about what are the best, the best avenues that we would have in order to avoid having to pay HUD back, and that includes thinking about the uses. So all these questions are something we're still trying to navigate and unfortunately there are certain times in HUD. So we haven't been able to get the specific responses from them, but we're, we're hoping to get information in the next two to three weeks.
All right. I appreciate, I appreciate that information. So I, I think it's fair to assume that we, we do have some time here. That if in fact, Save Smith Center goes in and they think that the building can be saved and we could put an RFP out and let that process run concurrently with the RFP to demolish the Smith Baker Center. Is that safe to assume that we would be in that timeframe?
That is correct. We do have a little bit of time. Again, I think it's a matter of weeks, maybe. I don't know that we have a lot of months, but we do have a couple of weeks that before we actually start.
Okay. I know my colleagues want to speak on this as well. I'd like to first hear from the city manager and his thoughts. I know I've spoken with you many times, Mr. Manager, and how we want to go about this and, you know, be courteous to the, the nonprofit as well, but I also don't want to interrupt the RFP for the demolition if in fact the building is not going to be salvageable.
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, yes, I mean, to the will of the council that we want to move in this direction, I believe we can do both concurrently for as long as DPD would allow that. So it is something that could happen. But once again, my fear honestly is what's happening in the state and the federal side, the uneasiness, the uncertainty of what, what monies could come in. Now, there's always, you know, the, the opportunity that we could find wealthy donors that would, would come forward. But once again, we're moving into the direction originally put forth. I don't believe any councilor here ever made this decision lightly. This has been something that has been ignored for over two decades. But I don't think there's a reason we can't try to move concurrently, but at one, at some point in the future, and I, I wish we knew that exact date, we're going to have to make a decision to, to move in either in one direction or the other.
Thank you. I'll defer to my colleagues for any comment.
Yeah, Councilors Yem, Robinson, Getche, Chow, Mercy. So go Council Yem first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilor Dakota for putting up the motion and I want to thanks members of the Save Smith Bakers who come forward and persist and, and try to save this beautiful structure. I also encourage the city to allow them to review, to look at the property, and then also to put the RFP. My thought on this, the city have owned this property in the past 20 years and we do not have enough funding to do anything with it. So in my real estate professional, is that when we own something that we cannot, we would then divest, we would sell off some asset that reduced the liability. And I see this Smith Baker being owned by the city of Lowell can also be a liability. And the city would need to spend approximately a million dollars at least to decontaminate the building and before demolition. So if we have this organization that willing to take on the risk of developing this property and then become a tax, put on a tax roll, paying property tax just like every other property owner. In addition, to solve the HUD problem about paying back HUD, if we put an agreement with the organization, we will sell you the building if you agree to pay whatever HUD that, that's the city or HUD. So if those conditions can be add-on to as part of the sale of the building, Smith Baker Center, to this Save Smith, to the organization, I would then thinks that it's a win-win situation for, for everyone, for the city and for the group and preserve this beautiful building. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Council Mercy.
I'd may. Oh. I thought you named like five people before me. That's why I get up out of my seat. I know that it's been neglected for quite some time when nobody uses it, it gets, goes in disarray, it's forgotten about, and it's led to deteriorate. I understand that. It's quite a normal thing. But when it came time for the vote to demolish, I know that people wanted it demolished, but I wanted to just give it that last chance. I wanted to deplete all hopes that it just wasn't salvageable, but I couldn't go there. I just am so grateful if my colleagues could support and just look at it one more time to see what we could do to save it. I think it's worth it. I'm so glad that the motion came up. I just would feel awful if it came down and we said, what if we could have, should have, would have? I don't want to think like that. I want to try to do something to see. And if they do by chance go over there and they feel it's not worth it, then fine. But just let's give it one more shot for the old girl over there across the street. Thank you.
Council Getche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city solicitor. Mr. Solicitor, if somebody is requesting something before an RFP and is a potential bidder, isn't it an unfair advantage to allow them to go in and look at something before the public gets an opportunity or even goes out to bid? And that, and they're asking a city council to take an official action to actually send them in there with a insurance policy that others may not be able to afford to go in there? So I think it's an unfair advantage to a potential bidder who's saying they want to bid. So through you, through the mayor to you, it has an appearance on it. And also, we had a city councilor who was on that board. So through Mr. Mayor to.
Not anymore. So, yes, your, your point is well received. I think, given the facts that everyone just put out there, I think, yes, that could create an advantage. Now, it wouldn't be proper to go forward with two, and this is my opinion, and I certainly can have further conversations with the city's purchasing agent, but I think to go forward with a concurrent RFP with a vote to demolish sort of hanging over the top, I wouldn't be comfortable with that RFP going forward because, A, if I were someone that wanted to put in a proposal, I wouldn't because you don't know if it's going to get demolished or not. So if it were the will of the council, just as an alternative, just based off of sort of what I'm hearing here, if someone wanted to make a motion to rescind the, and I'm not advocating for one thing or another, but if someone wanted to make a motion to rescind the vote to demolish, and if that were to be successful, then I think that would change the whole narrative. I still think the issue would be there for certain individuals going in to look at the building that have expressed interest in bidding on it. I do see an issue with that. But without the vote to demolish being there, it would, it would create more options than currently exist.
I could, Council Getche, a quick question for the solicitor. So I have a legal question as well about, you know, this council took a, a legal binding vote to demolish the building. And in the past, the votes have been taken. Isn't usually a two-year waiting period to bring something back, to overturn it? And somebody who voted to demolish would have to bring that motion forward to change the, the vote again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the two-year ban, that, that wouldn't apply in this scenario. And what you just described, the motion to reconsider, is a little bit different. That has to be done per the city council rules by the Friday following the vote, and that can only be made by a councilor who is on the prevailing side, whereas a motion to rescind is there and that can be made at any time by someone from either side. The little sort of caveat with a motion to rescind is if it's brought up organically at a meeting and there's no notice, it has to be a two-thirds vote. If there is notice given to councilors ahead of a meeting, then it would be a majority vote. So that's the difference. So it's slightly different than a motion to reconsider.
Thank you. Council Getche.
And I just wanted to clarify that. I had spoken to Mr. McCarthy multiple times also, and he has a passion for the building. There's no question. But when, when you look at this, and I'm just looking at on the city's side legality-wise, when you say that someone's going to have an opportunity to go in a building with an insurance policy and look at something, and then there's a piece to that, it's an unfair advantage to a potential bidder who's saying they're bidding. So that's where the question came in. And I do think it's an unfair, it has an appearance of an unfair advantage during a bidding process, which you know under procurement laws, you can't do. So that was my question. You know, the, the thing that sticks out, and I had spoken to Mr. McCarthy, is that they can't get funding until they actually take ownership. And that's the hot spot. So nobody knows, can you get the funding or not, as the manager said, and so did DPD. They said that they're, you know, up in the air about grants and everything. So are we pushing this off again? And when people say that, you know, this compromise and, you know, question the status quo, the status quo is leave the building the way it is. We've done that for 22 years. That's status quo. We're looking outside the box at future development of that area and saying, is there a better use than doing that because it's in such disarray and there are issues? So at this time, I'm, I'm in the same position as I was a few weeks ago, unless the RFP is out at the same time. And you're saying that that's not a good idea because, you know, potentially it throws people away from the bidding process. So, thank you.
So last question I have, Mr. Solicitor, is, so what's stopping Joe the Builder from tomorrow calling saying, I want to be in there as well?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I think that would be, I think that's the inherent issue with, with doing that.
Okay.
It, it, it wouldn't seem right to just allow two people, whereas to your point, others may want to do that as well.
Council Robinson.
Thank you. If timing is of the essence of this, January 14th, I think it was, we talked about this when the GAIL report came back. I made a motion to tie the, the GAIL report to a RFP and also brought up any tiffs or ties or incentives the, the city might be comfortable offering to put it out to one last-ditch effort bid. At the time, the only person that voted in favor of it was Council Mercy and myself.
And I.
You had to rescind yourself, Council Yem. I don't understand what's happened since. Like, some of the comments that were made by, matter of fact, the person that made the motion to demolish was, I've read the GAIL reports in depth and this building has served its purpose. But now we're on the floor talking about rescinding a vote for demolition, which I wasn't a fan of to start. I just, it, it's, it's being messy. And if we're looking towards a timeframe, we want two RFPs going out that are in stock contrast to each other? On one hand, let's see what, if we can get this demolished. On the other hand, let's see if we can get any interest on, on saving this. What are we doing? Because this doesn't make sense. I mean, if people weren't fully aware of the, the status of this building, why would you make a motion to demolish? That's the first question. And then to bring it back, none of us have been inside this building. So we're basically playing games blindly right now with this. I mean, I, I don't know what the will of my colleagues is, but I know there was a vote to demolish this, this property. Me personally, for me to support rescinding that vote and, and, and beginning that bidding process, one of the components has to be, if we're going to transfer ownership of this property, at the very least, whoever takes ownership has to prove that they can at least stabilize this and stop the bleeding on the building. Because if not, it potentially could be a transfer and, and we'll be still sitting out there looking at red Xs until that whoever ends up with ownership can come up with enough money to stabilize this property. So I think we're, we're in a tight situation and, and I just think we need to start thinking before we make motions to take major actions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the Council Getche bring up that the legality question, I was going to support the original motion on the floor to have the group go look inside the building for, you know, potentially rehabbing it. As Council Mercy mentioned, we, we made a decision before on, the building was based on financial and public safety issues. And at that time, this group trying to save the Smith Baker building didn't, to my knowledge, didn't have a plan in, in place yet. But hearing the speaker speak tonight, it sounds like they do have a plan in place. And I don't know what the will of the body is, whether we send the formal motion to demolish or not, but if the motion on the floor is to have this group to go inside, look at it, and again, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. If there are the builders in place who would like to go inside along with this group, maybe invite them, I'm just throwing things out there. I don't know all the details and legality of it, but I think it's worthwhile, as Council Mercy had mentioned, we, I don't think any of us here on a council is supposed to make it safe, trying to save it. But at the time that we made the, the vote, it was strictly based on the financial and public safety issues. If, you know, if the motion, if there was not a motion on the floor to rescind it, I would also be in favor of that because I, we could always come back to make a motion again if this group want to go inside, look at it, if it doesn't work out. And then we could always visit on city council floor, what is the best path about going in? Thank you.
Council Blenja.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to stand by the opinion of the solicitor this evening. I, I just think that if we're going to do something like that, open the building up to potential owners and developers, that. to potential owners and developers, that you would need to do it for everybody. That was something that would need to be posted and advertised. And not only that, this council in January voted to demolish the Smith Baker Center. So who is, how can we now go down the path of putting it out for RFP and having a sort of an open house at the Smith Baker? I think that will take us down a path of status quo, and that thing will sit for many, many more months and years. You know, I, I appreciate very much the intent of the, say, the Smith Baker Center individuals very much. I know the intent is well-intended. But I, I don't know what it would achieve as, you know, we, if we were to let two individuals go in from this organization, what it's going to tell us as far as new information. Now, as the Gail report stated, what still stands out in my mind is that the, many of the structural components of this building are camouflaged or hidden, if you will, by decorative features. So I don't know what this walkthrough would achieve in that regard, and give me new information as far as the structural integrity of that building. As the representative from Planning and Development had said, we are still waiting on the hazardous material report, which knows where we're going there. I don't anticipate that to be good either. So I'm not going to support the motion tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Councilor Noon?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, a question for our city's solicitor. You spoke of two RFP, one back when we voted to demolish it. I see this, do you see this motion as a, an RFP? Or just simply a request to have two representatives of the safe Smith Baker with our inspector to go in and that insurance be covered? They have their own insurance, so there's no liability to the city. Is that simply what the motion asks, or the intent of the motion?
Solicitor?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm not sure of the intent of the motion. I simply just will take away from it as I read it. Yes, I think currently as it stands, if the vote to demolish is still in place, and two individuals wanted to go in and look at it, then there wouldn't be a conflict there, because then there's nothing else that would come from it. They would just go in and look. The vote to demolish would still be, the vote to demolish would still be there, and there would be no advantage.
That exactly is what I see here.
Right.
That is, the vote to demolish is in place. So they going in right now is just to say, let me take a look, you know, see what it looks like inside. I'm fine by that, because I don't see there's two, two competing RFP. I see just to going in. If they come back with an RFP, that would be an issue that we need to deal with. If they come back with RFP, having business plan and proof of finance in place, I think I would join in. But if there's no plan, business plan in place, no proof of finance in place, I'd go with the vote to rescind, uh, uh, the vote to demolish that we had voted on a couple of weeks ago. But for now, I will support this motion because simply asking to go in and take a look inside. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Scott?
That's not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually was not present for the vote to demolish. I, I didn't know we were going to be voting on it that evening. I was out of the country. But I would have voted to try to get an RFP to happen, just a last-ditch effort. I mean, Lowell's a historic city with beautiful architecture and beautiful historic buildings, and I think it was our opportunity to just give it one more try. It hadn't gone out for quite some time to bid. I do agree with Councilor Gitcher. I do think, at this point, hearing what he said, having them do a walkthrough, and then if we vote next meeting to rescind, I mean, I think it could be a conflict. I think if we want to after, if we come forward next week, if someone came forward next week with a motion to rescind, we could then, I guess, invite any bidders to come forward with an insurance certificate to go tour the building. I think that would probably be a wise move. And I just wanted to make sure I heard right. If we did a motion tonight, it's a two-thirds vote. If it's a week from now, it's a majority. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So coming into this discussion tonight, I had three concerns with the property across the street. Concern one is safety. We've had the sidewalk and parking spaces blocked off over there for over two years due to falling slate roof tiles that pose a hazard to pedestrians and vehicles. Two is further deterioration of the building. The building has been sitting empty for 20-plus years at this point, and the longer we take to go in any direction, the worse it's going to deteriorate. It's just the way it is. And the third thing I was worried about is the HUD funding clawback that we discussed earlier. Now, I have a fourth concern, which is the legality aspect and the potential impact on any action we were to take tonight, based on the discussion that, that Councilor Gitcher brought up. I think that having people look at the building is not a bad idea, but I don't think we should do it in a way that is going to put this further li, pos, the potential of further liability on the back of the city. I don't know what the best course of action is tonight, but I would suggest to my colleague who brought the motion, he may want to consider tabling this motion, and then having a discussion with the solicitor about a path forward, so we can come in next week and know what we should be doing. Because I think if we take action in any direction tonight, it's going to paint us into a bit of a corner. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Quickly, before we take a roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Actually, hearing Councilor Janess-
Two, two seconds?
Two seconds, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you know, I think what Councilor Scott said is probably the correct way to go, is maybe if a motion to rescind wants to be brought back on the floor first to avoid any legal challenges, I'm not saying I don't support that, but it's probably the right way to go in this instance. I see no problem with the filing of the motion or the spirit of the motion. I think it's commendable when someone listens to the community, and, and based on the listening from the community, they reach out and try to bring something forward to solve a solution to a problem. And there have been plenty of councils before that have filed motions to do things and avoiding no at the end of it. So no problem with the spirit of the motion and, you know, how it's going forward, but I think the timing-wise, the process is a little out of whack. So Councilor Janess's suggestion of maybe thinking about, you know, for a week, taking it off, and then coming back with a motion to rescind?
I would like to make the motion to table until at least next week, until we have some time for the city solicitor to bring something forward to us. Obviously, I, I don't want to deal with the legal repercussions that may happen with the city, so I think that's the, probably the safest way to go with this.
Instead of withdrawing it right now and bringing it back?
Yes, please.
Motion withdrawn by Councilor, Councilor Yem, you agree, right? You second the motion? All right, motion withdrawn. Thank you. It being seven o'clock, well past seven o'clock. Last thing we want to do is keep the competition waiting. General four public hearings, 4.1 ordinance to create the new chapter 268 wage theft. Your second reading by title. In ordinance, amending the code of ordinances, City of Law, Massachusetts, by creating a new chapter 268 entitled Wage Theft. Start the public hearing by those speaking in which is in favor.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Rourke and the board. Robert Chutson, 138 Avon Street. I'm here today to talk about wage theft and how it's not only important to me, but to the city of Lowell. I've been a carpenter for 20 years, 12 years open shop, eight years in the union. I've lived in Lowell my whole life, well, in and around Lowell my whole life, and I take a lot of pride in calling it my home. I've seen a lot of wage theft in my time. One of my first jobs was on a couple apartment buildings on the boulevard overlooking the Rourke Bridge, and there was a lot of wage theft there. And for the rest of the time working for that contractor, I saw it, and it was very prevalent, not only for me, but for my coworkers. It was hard to see many people that I grew close with get let go if not paid, knowing how much they needed the money. I really never thought it was going to end until I got into the union, and this isn't a union or a non-union thing, this is a community problem for everybody. And what I'm, so, sorry, I apologize. So what I'm saying, though, is now I'm a landlord and working towards helping people like me break free from wage theft, and I think this is huge for the city. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? In favor?
Good evening. My name is Noel Xavier. I'm the Director of Organizing for the Carpenters Union. I represent 30,000 carpenters across New England and New York State, over 200 carpenters here in the city of Lowell. I, I had the, the pleasure to live and grow up here in Lowell, and I just want to thank and commend the city for putting forward a strong wage theft ordinance language that's going to help and protect workers. In my position now, I work every day with a team of organizers that are out there talking to the workforce that's working in the open shop, in the non-union, where we're trying to organize workers, give them a better alternative to, to, to a career. And we hear back from them constantly. Just today, we got a call from a couple of carpenters working out in Marlboro that haven't been paid in two weeks, doing drywall. And this happens every single day. Workers get stiffed by the contractors that want to cheat them. And anytime that we see a city putting language forward that's going to help workers, we're in complete support. More than ever, at the federal level, we see the turmoil that exists. At the state level, where we see, you know, a lack of resources, there's just so many cases in, in, in all sorts of wage theft. Anything that a city is able to take, any steps that they're able to take to help workers is commendable, and, and we're in full support. I, I, I want to thank everyone. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor? In favor, in favor? Portion of the meeting is closed. Any votes speak with opposition? Opposition, opposition? That portion of the meeting is closed. The motion to adopt by Councilor Gitcher, seconded by Councilor Dakota. Any comments? Councilor Robinson?
I'd just like to commend my colleagues and the administration on pushing this. I remember when this was brought to the floor, I believe you, Mr. Mayor Rourke, brought this forward. I mean, as we're all aware, Lowell has a strong, strong, strong history with labor, with, with fighting for improvements to work conditions. The statue is sitting out there that, that reminds us every day across our market mills. And so to, anything we can do to support the workforce in the city, I think is, is a major step forward, and I'd just like to say, thank everybody that made this happen. Thank you.
Councilor Yem, your comments?
Thank, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank the city and the Law Department for a really strong language wage theft. I personally worked with a number of the immigrants communities, Southeast Asian, who worked, and then they were taken advantage of and not get paid for what they, they worked for. And this is really, really important for all of us on the city council and the city administration. And I want to thank our union who are here today to support this motion. You have done tremendous job, and here we are to support you and make sure that you're not being taken advantage of like some of the family that I know of. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manjul.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I want to thank the city solicitor for making us look good, because he wrote this, and that's who we have to thank for this. So thank you, Solicitor Williams.
Any comments? All good? Mr. Clark, roll call.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yem?
Yes.
Councilor Belanger?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Dakota?
Yes.
Councilor Gitcher?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Mercy?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
11 years.
Sebastian, always good to see you. Return to the motion list, 5.7, Councilor Robinson. Request city manager have the property department look at increasing traffic enforcement efforts in the area of Hildreth and Akenav during pre and post school hours. Seconded by Councilor Janess, Councilor Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Say aye opposed motion passes. 5.8, Councilor Robinson. Request city manager invite the election director in for a discussion around setting the 225, 2025 election calendar. Seconded by Councilor Scott, Councilor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to city manager, is this okay to just invite him in for a conversation and, and kind of get an idea of, of what are some of the dates that his office is looking at? And, and any other questions that we might have that surround the election calendar for this year from the public, as well as just getting an update, is he prepared for the election coming up in November?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council, Councilor Yem, so we can bring him in. He's already been working on this, so it's something we're definitely just a little bit ahead of, and I think he'd be more than happy to come in and talk about elections and the calendar and how that's going to operate.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, if we're going to have him in, could we possibly get an update on the progress of my motion that I have for the online census submission? We could try. It's been a while. Thank you.
All the figures say aye opposed motion passes. Councilor Gitcher, 5.9, fact 10 together. 5.9, Councilor Gitcher, request city manager find the city council with a number of fire hydrants out of service, delocation and the date they apply the service. 5.10, Councilor Gitcher, request city manager find the city council with a number of fire hydrants still in service, the three and two-and-a-half inch supplied nozzles. Seconded by Councilor Janess, Councilor Gitcher.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Sometimes you have to write them a little bit so people don't understand them. But the reality is, we've had seven fires in seven days in the city, three in one day. And in many cases, they went to use a fire hydrant and they couldn't. And one was, three were in the area of a tragic fire that a resident had reached out and said, you know, these things aren't working, and they're, they're terrified of it because of the past history in that neighborhood. And, you know, when I looked back, I had talked to somebody over at the water department, and they said, in the back of the water department garage, there's still 40 hydrants that, out back, that when I bought them when I was the executive director. So it's going to be interesting to see these reports on what is actually being done. And if you go back in time, I believe it was the mayor who made a motion about turning gates and making sure they operated correctly. And I'm sure if we look at that program, that didn't happen either. And the issue is that we have a responsibility to protect the residents of the city, our firefighters in public safety, and that's what all of us took office to do. And when you know these things out front are not being done, it's sad to see. There's 2,400 fire hydrants in the city, and many of them were obsolete when I was there. And we started a program where we're going to change 50 to 100 so that we could replace them in a 35-year span. And it sounds like the program's gone, and we're not testing hydrants every year to see if they even work. What the fire department does is they go out and they just make sure the nozzles work and they're lubricated, and they put them back on. So that, to me, is telling you that we're putting more of a demand on our firefighters as they get there. They have to drag the hose further. So these are questions that will be posed this week and next week, and hopefully we can get a response rapidly so that we can understand where we are in this situation, because it is putting residents at risk. Thank you.
All the figures say aye opposed motion passes. 5.11, Councilors Rourke, uh, correct, Councilors Gitcher and Mayor Rourke. Request city manager of Skanska OPM and Perkins Dispin of LHS renovation project, come before the city council and explain projected delays in Phase III of the project, 1922 building, resolution of the issue, and to work on the outside of scope of needed and the costs. Councilor Gitcher, go ahead. Oh, sure, yeah. Obviously, very alarming to see last Thursday's School Building Committee meeting for the first time, I think, since the project began. Admittedly, this probably run out of the contingency money, and it's going to be delayed in the overall project, just in Phase III alone. Also knowing that a lot of Phase IV hasn't been looked at yet, the 1895 portion, so I think, you know, this is a time where it did come before us, and obviously, the means televised too, but I don't think anybody would argue many more people pay attention to, to council meetings than that. So obviously, it's not the best case scenario. It seems, you know, much more of a negative than a positive about something that should be a, a great story, but hopefully, we get some definite answers. I don't misimagine, like I said, hopefully by April 3rd, they'll, they'll have the correct estimates on time and cost. Okay, so, then, you know, maybe some balances of, of contingency of what's, of what's needed. I'm hearing there's only $2 million left in one of the funds, so not the greatest news going forward, but I'll leave it at that. Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. We were made aware of it when we did a tour with the council on February 15th, when we walked through the building and saw the conditions. We saw the floor starting to get ripped up in the 1922 building, and there were questions.[1780.61] the floor starting to get ripped up in the 1922 building, and there were questions. When I was the executive director of the water department, that floor had flooded, and there was, I think it's Lowell Community Health was in the basement at one point. And the question was, was it city water or was it canal water? We took a sample at that time, and the water did not have fluoride in it. So, if it didn't have fluoride in it, it was being penetrated from an outside water source. Today, we're being told that it's city water in there, and I don't have any way of disagreeing with that. But one thing that was very interesting on the tour, and I believe all the councilors that were there, they said they had to lower the canal so they could work on the floor. That's what they told us. Mr. Manjul, I'm sure you can verify that's what was said. They lowered the canal so they could work on the floor, but the canal is not penetrating the floor. Someone needs to tell me how that happens. Why would you have to lower the canal if it's not penetrating through? And then, we were also told that the company who owns the canal, it would be very hard to get any funding source out of. That's what we were told. But it seems as though now we're saying it's city water that penetrated through and somehow washed the fines out of underneath the floor to where, I don't know. It's mysteriously taken. Again, I'll divert to the geotechnical engineers over there, but I would suggest that we start testing that canal to see if it's penetrating through. Raise the canal, see if the water comes in, and see where you are long before we start getting expenditures. And I don't want anybody to mistake that I'm not 110% in on this project because I am. You know, as we walked on the second floor, we were told the ceiling that wasn't supposed to be ripped out got ripped out because they didn't realize the trusses were there. When I asked, they said, so what was supporting the weight on there when you did your studies? Oh, we don't know. What do you mean? There's a floor above you. It had to have trusses. What was supporting that? Oh, we don't know that answer. There's things that, when you look at this study, they were supposed to look at it in the best interest of us. And I understand they put the pylons, they dug the area where they were actually going to do work. It makes sense, right? But at some point, we sat here through the 2019, 2020s, and they said to us, we inspected this building up and down. There's no asbestos we don't know about. There's nothing, no conditions in these buildings that we don't know about. And here we are, and we're only in Phase III, as the mayor just outlined, and we're worried about the monies. And I know you can't go back because that was reiterated too at that walk-through, is, you know, how did it is to get money back from people that may have not, or seen something, or didn't see something? I just think in the best interest, and now we're disrupting the students also because now we can't occupy areas that we said we were going to occupy areas. Now we're moving kids around again, and somebody needs to come up here and explain to us exactly what is going on. Because we didn't really get much of that, and I don't think the council got much of that during the walk-through. We were told there's issues. We were told there's different thicknesses in the floor down there, and somehow, some of it must have got washed out through the years, or there's voids and stuff like that. But Mayor Rourke, you're not wrong about it. When you look at these numbers, it's there. We have to pay for it, but let's make sure that it's going to be solid for the future. And the taxpayers are not going to be on the spot. If you think about this, if they would have found this in the beginning, this money could have been paid 75%, somewhere in there, from the MSBA funds. Now, we can't get a reimbursement because someone told us something that was not true. And that's the hard part to take on the taxpayers' end, and this will get floated through you, Mr. Mayor, to the CFO or the manager. If there's overruns, because when last time, I believe Jim Dowd from Skanska was here, I asked him the question, do you think this project's going to have an overrun because the contingency was going to go over? He had stated no because he had other monies in other areas that he could move over. But when we all talked to him on that Saturday, it seemed like the contingency was going to be eaten up, all those funds were going to be eaten up. If the funds go over the projected amount, would that be added to the bond, the total amount that goes over, to the bond when we go to secure them? How would those funds be paid?
Who wants it, Mr. Manjul?
So, Council, if there's an overage on the $381 million, we could always petition MSBA for that. But I'm not, once again, we didn't believe we were going to be successful previously with the overage of the steel, and we were. But, I mean, the direct answer right now is no, that would be something that the city would have to pay. But, once again, you know, working like as we have in the past with a state delegation, we're fortunate enough to get the other monies included, which was to the $238 million, I believe, for the steel overage. So, that's not going to be out of the question. But once again, to your point, the typical expense would be 80/20 is what it's always talked about. But when you really get back to the brass tacks and back off things that can be accepted, it's 62/38. That'd be about correct. It would just, so, possibly. But I'd have to, I'd have to, the answer today would be no. It'd be borne by the taxpayer until we get any other additional assistance from MSBA, if we could.
The last message I want to send to a contractor at this stage of the game is to cut corners. Let's do it right. But, you know, the money end is always the question piece, but I think that you give us some hope that there may be a way through the MSBA to recoup some of the costs. So, I look forward to seeing them come in because I think this body is going to have some questions. Because if this body wants to do their homework, go back and watch the 2019, 2020 school building committee meetings and the stuff that people were being told, and you'll start to understand, you know, where we are and what people are saying today. Thank you.
A lot of things that Council Gitcher early on that could have changed this, right? Mr. Manjul, go ahead.
To the, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council for the edification of the council and those listening. I know that the assistant city manager is working with them, potentially come in possibly April 8th, April 15th, which is the next few Tuesdays. We're hoping to have at the next SBC, which is be the Thursday prior to. Hopefully, you'd have that information by that time. But our intent would be to ask the builders, et cetera, the entire team to be here within the month of April to discuss some of those questions, just for the edification of the people listening, as well as the edification of the members.
Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would just ask whether or not we could get an opinion, I guess, if there's any recourse that we would be able to take on these, some of these design issues. I mean, I'd agree with Council Gitcher. I mean, there isn't anyone in this room, I think, that didn't know that water pretty freely flowed underneath the 1922 building and flooded. I mean, I saw pictures up to people's knees quite often. So, I can't imagine that there wasn't a look and borings done to really see what was happening underground there. And that was a real surprise to me. And when the response, when we asked, I know Council Gitcher asked, was, well, there were people in the building. We didn't have free access to the building. That's what we got. And I really think there's, there could be a little liability there, and I just would like to hear whether or not there's any recourse that we would consider. Thank you.
Mr. Manjul, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Council will be exploring all potential options in our future as to what could possibly happen. So...
Council Dakota first, and Council Gitcher again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that Saturday, when we all went in there, I'd never seen 10 councils with their jaws down to their knees because it was, I couldn't fathom what I was looking at. I really couldn't. And there wasn't any of us that walked out of there saying that this contingency fund is gone, not to mention, we haven't even got to the Coburn Building. So, let's not be naive here, folks. This is going over, and it's going over a lot, and the taxpayers are going to take it. So, if there's any legal recourse, Mr. Williams, that we possibly have, I don't know if you need help to try to rectify this with outside counsel, but I'm telling you, we were given a bag, a real, can't say the word. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No.
Council Belanger?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this, since we've got into Phase III in the 1922 building, there has been plenty of surprises, if you will. And again, as my colleagues, when we did tour the 1922 building back on February 15th, just walking into that basement, you knew that we're going to be in a little trouble. You know, I definitely have a few questions. I don't understand with the history of the flooding in this basement and the known construction cost per square foot. We're going to be quadrupled to just about anywhere else in this project because of all these issues. Why it wasn't pegged for another use, storage or whatnot. But here we are. It's our problem. We own it, and we have to come up with a solution. So, I do appreciate the motion, the co-motion, and let's get them in here to see what our solutions are. I know it's going to be a little time before we get some costs, a few weeks. And as to what we can do, we're going to be looking to explore all avenues here, whether it's MSBA, litigation, whatever it may be. But this one here is on the taxpayers. We've already had one bailout with steel costs that soared during COVID, thanks to Senator Kennedy's office, and I'm not so sure we can get another. So, let's see if we can come up with a solution. Let's all wait and see the numbers. We'll take a business approach to this. As to what we can do, we use level heads and see what we can do here because this is problematic, and there's a way to go with this old building. That's, some of it is unexplored, and therefore, we have some more unknowns, if you will. So, very concerning. You know, I do appreciate because when it comes to this 22 building, bad news needs to travel faster than good news. And we certainly have that. But let's keep, let's be cautiously optimistic as best we can. Wait until all the numbers come in, and we'll tackle it at that point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably shouldn't say what I'm going to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. And I just want the public to know, and I'm not psychic. I know I'm a reader, but I'm not that type of a reader. But I firmly believe that this is a problem that could have possibly happened. And when you weigh all the things together, I was a little bit selfish. I wanted a new school for our students. I wanted a school that probably would have been built by now. I wanted a school that we wouldn't have all these problems with asbestos. And while the students are learning, I didn't want, you know, asbestos to be exposed and all this while students were around. And I will say that when you look at Lowell High School, what has happened already is very beautiful. I'm not going to deny that. But this is what I was worried about. Not that I, I just assumed that when you get an old building like that and you haven't gone into it and pulled out the stuffing and you see what's there. And so, that was troubling to me. And I, this is the reason I wanted people to know. But when, that I voted the way that I did. But the public went to the polls and the majority rules, the people have their say, and they voted for renovation, they won. But I hope they're not upset because that's what they wanted. They wanted this. I did not want this. But be that as it may. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Council Gitcher.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. One thing through you to Manager Golden. Manager Golden, could we have all reports from wastewater over the last 10 years to the 2200 building or that area? Because if they're saying it's city water that came in, I would love to see how that happened. And did the contractor ask for any reports on the city side when they were getting ready to do that floor? So, those are the questions that come up. If it's a known that there was a problem down there that the city water was backing in, then we should know that, right?
Mr. Manjul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Council, water, not wastewater?
Wastewater. Because it would be wastewater. It's during storms that it was backing up.
Right.
So, it would be wastewater.
Which I know they did some dye testing, but we can get that information.
So, if there are any reports of wastewater backing up in there, because that's the only city water that could go back in there, or drain, or drain lines that were back in, they would be the ones called over there first if the floor was flooding. So, I want to know what their outcome was during those reports. Was it city water or was it canal water? Because I know I was there when we pulled a sample and brought it to the water department. It had zero fluoride in it. And any time you had heavy rains, it came up. So, was there a city line that blocked up that came in, and we just left it for 40 years? Or was it the canal rising that came in? So, those are just the questions that come out. And if it was, we should have checked for those voids if we knew that there was water in there. So, those are just questions that come up. And for me, I don't really care where a building was built or wasn't built or any of that stuff. We have a contractor on the hook. Do your job. Simple. We paid you. You told us it was this. Do your job.
It is ironic that we're left holding a bag on this at this council, though. It should be said. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. 512, Council Mercier, request city manager report on how many city employees are working from home and why, seconded by Council Yam. Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself, but when you do ask the different department heads if anybody's working from home, maybe they're not. I don't know. But I do hear things that sometimes people, in one instance, went out on vacation and decided they wanted to work from home, so they get vacation pay and a pay for work. That, to me, is double dipping. That should not be allowed. So, I hope that you could check that. And if they are doing that, I want, I want to know who's working from home if they are. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Council Yam, you want to take 513 and 514 together? By Council Yam, seconded by Council Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. 513, Council Yam, request city mayor prepare a proclamation declaring March 29th, 2025 National Vietnam War Veterans Day 50th anniversary. And 514, Council Yam, request city manager have appropriate department plan an event in conjunction with the U.S. Vietnam War commemoration and local veteran organizations to honor and thank Vietnam veterans and their families, both seconded by Council Scott, Council Yam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a one and a half video to show in appreciation of our Vietnam War veterans. So, I'd like to share that with the entire council and the people at home as well.
Today, we join all Americans in offering a humble thank you to our 7 million Vietnam veterans living in America and abroad, and the families of all 10 million who served during the Vietnam War period. This national commemoration authorized by Congress and established under the Secretary of Defense honors everyone who served on active duty in the U.S. Armed Forces at any time between November 1st, 1955, and May 15th, 1975, regardless of where they served. None of these patriots could self-determine where they were stationed, and all were seen in the same way by a country that could not separate the war from the warrior as we do today. National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29th, provides the perfect opportunity to make this right. Help us reach Vietnam veterans in your families and your neighborhoods, especially those who are isolated, living alone or in care facilities. They deserve to know that they have earned the nation's deep gratitude and humble thanks. You can also help us honor the Gold Star families in your communities for their unimaginable loss and the sacrifices they have endured. So, today, and especially on March 29th, National Vietnam War Veterans Day, we hope you'll join the nation and thank the Vietnam veterans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a moving video, and the U.S. Vietnam War Commemoration has set the date, March 29th, is the 50th anniversary for the entire country, so that we honor their legacies, and we thank the Vietnam War Vet who came home at the time that they were not well-received and appreciated. And I want to see our city to do an event to thank them, to honor them, and for their family who sacrificed. Some of them may not, did not come home. Their family lived with the suffering all these years. So, this is a moment that the city shine to show our appreciation for their sacrifices. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manjul?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, we are moving forward, have been. City Hall, it'd be Friday, May 20, March 28th, excuse me. We've received a lot of support and a lot of discussion about people here at City Hall wanting to do something. So, we will, we have been moving forward towards Friday, the 28th.
And I also asked the Veterans Office to identify some of the Vietnam Vet who may be still living in our city, or their family who still live in the city, maybe take the occasion to honor them for their sacrifices and for their courage. And that's, I think, that's, it's go a long way to heal the wound. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes. 515, Counselor Dakota. Request City Manager have a city solicitor draft special legislation to exempt the city of Lowell from the Uniform Procurement Act from homeless student transportation similar to special education transportation. Secured by Counselor Janess. Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was speaking with a former transportation director colleague that I worked with many years, and he said that he's never seen his homeless transportation budget as high as it is, and they're not even, they're just about halfway through their, the school year. A lot has to do with the homeless transportation contract that is under the 30B jurisdiction. I'm sure Mr. Baldwin agrees with me that we, the city council, has a stake in this, is that we actually pay for school bus transportation out of the city council budget. Is that correct, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct. Transportation is one of the items that doesn't count towards net school spending, so it's part of the appropriation we make to the schools, but it's essentially a city cost.
Understood. So in speaking with my colleague, it seemed to be quite the headache that the homeless transportation is causing at this point. If a city, let's say, for example, goes out to bid and puts an RFP and one contractor gets the bid, considering, considering the driver shortage, let's say there was 100 students that needed transportation, homeless transportation, but the vendor who got the contract says, "I can only handle 70 of these kids," that would then put that contractor in breach of contract and then leaves the school district to then try to find another vendor. While these other vendors were also vendors that bid on the RFP, so now they're saying they know that that other vendor is in breach of contract, so what they do is they bid on it and they basically double their number. So we're getting hit. So if a student in the original RFP was at $300 a day and that contractor can't fulfill his obligation, and we put it out to another vendor who might have come in second or third, they're going to say, "Well, we'll do it for 500 because we know that that vendor can't do it." And that's what's happening in a lot of the districts. So it is the hope, just like special education transportation does not come under 30B, that if we could go out for quotes rather than under 30B and put in an RFP, this will save the city money, especially Lowell, where we have just signed a new five-year in-district special education transportation contract. We're going out for an out-of-district spend contract, and then the big buses next year. So this city can expect at least a $6 to $7 million increase in transportation in the next two years. So if we could send that to the delegation, it's, I know this sounds like a school matter, but in fact, this needs city council vote in order to proceed. Thank you.
Counselor Getche.
Through you to the CFO. CFO Baldwin, couldn't they currently, till this legislation gets through or whatever happens, couldn't they currently write in their, their bid saying that if they can't provide the service, then they have to cover the cost of someone who you have to now pay to do it? They did that in another community for plowing. If you were the bidder and won, if you couldn't perform the job as outlined in the agreement on the days needed, you would have to pay whatever the cost is for the community to hire someone else to do it. And I think that stops people from now coming out and saying, "I can't do it," because they might have had a higher-paying job somewhere else. So it says, "Okay, here you are. You won the bid. If you can't perform your job up to this, whatever the replacement is for that service, you are obligated to cover." And it stops those non-calls because people are making more money somewhere else. So that might be something to look into when you guys write these contracts until this either works out or doesn't work out, because it just doesn't seem, as Counselor Dakota outlined, that someone could just say, "No, after having a contract, I'm out." So whatever the replacement costs are, if you write that in there, it covers the cost for the city.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm sorry. CFO Baldwin, did you have something to say?
Yeah.
You want to pay Counselor Dakota?
I just want to try. Why not?
Mr. CFO, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could respond to Counselor Getche's question, I think that's something we could try. One of the, I think this is a good motion and may address a problem that Lowell has, but other gateway cities, no doubt, experience. And the law is sympathetic, I think, in the case of special education, and that's why there's an exemption to 30B for special education. In my opinion, that same, the same set of circumstances apply also to homeless transportation because of the transient nature of the students, but the 30B law doesn't apply to them. Now that, Counselor, what you mentioned is something we can certainly look at as far as the contracts. One of the problems we've had, though, is in trying to issue a bid, we didn't get any respondents this last time around. So, you know, it kind of put us behind the eight ball. We, you know, one of the difficult things about homeless transportation is you don't necess, and Counselor Dakota can certainly speak more eloquent on this than I can, you don't necessarily know where they're coming from at the beginning of the year, so it's hard to define the scope in a bid. You know, it would be much easier if we were to address them as they come, which we would only be able to do with an exemption from 30B, because once we get up to the $100,000 cap set by 30B, then we have to do a bid. So there's a lot of challenges to this. It's a very complex issue, but certainly the comments from the counselor are something we can try and look at to try to make things better.
Actually, Counselor Getche brings up a good point. We could attach the performance bar, Counselor, but on the initial RFP, the number that they're going to put in is going to be just that much higher concerning, concerning that, so it kind of doubles it. But if I could ask through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor, do you feel that this is the just, the right way to go about this through the legislature? I'd just like to hear your comments.
Solicitor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, I think if this is at all possible, it would really change, it would change things in a big way for the city. Obviously, I have a role in this process, not only in how I work with procurement, but also with the contract construction. And with the needs for homeless being something that changes daily, and there is a limited pool of companies that provide these services, it doesn't take very long for some of these, the $100,000 threshold, to come and go. And then, A, you have to try and forecast that ahead of time, which is possible, but very difficult. And if you need to make adjustments or changes on the fly, if it's a 30B contract, you can only increase it by 25% first off. And then, secondly, if it's over $100,000, you have to put it out to bid, and you have to find people to actually, who can handle the work and who are interested. And up to this point, it's been very, very difficult. So it's a lot simpler and easier with special education because it's exempt from 30B. So if we had an opportunity to approach the homeless transportation the same way we are with special education, it would simplify everything. It would make a big, big difference.
Counselor Getche, go ahead.
I guess my question's going to come for the person later when we look at the bad bills, because how many vehicles do we actually send out for, for homeless people? And why can't Lowell maybe buy vans to go get them at the rate of 100 grand? And the patent is very simple, that we're running over 100 grand for the last four years, and we've never gone out for an RFP, never. And at one point, she didn't even do any of that. She just basically stood up here and said, "They fall under the McKinley Vento," when she sat here and said that, the old finance person from the city side, I mean, from the school side, I'm sorry. I don't want to put you under that stress, CFO Baldwin. But, you know, why not just buy a few vans? And they cost 52 grand. They're not a lot of money, and you're going to save in three years and hire someone to drive back and forth. And it doesn't look like, from looking at their bills, it's $500 to drive somebody from here to Braintree and back. You know, if we can't do that service and keep it in-house and give somebody a job, we can run mail in a truck back and forth from City Hall on the school department and run stuff like that, but we can't figure out how to do this piece. And I think that, then you don't even need any of this legislation. You keep it in-house, you have three or four vans that do it.
You just said the magic words, "Bring it in-house."
That motion was filed at the school community meeting a little while ago.
That's why we have you, that's why we have you there.
I filed it, Counselor, so, yeah, it got nowhere, so. All the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes. Moving on, 6, 6.1, communications for the city manager. A, motion response, economic development with attachments. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the administration for this response specifically. Assistant City Manager, Ivani Baez-Rose, and Ali Carter, the Director of Economic Development. I think it's a fantastic report that shows how this city supports our small businesses. There are 121 different businesses reflected in this report across the city that we have invested in, helped, and done everything we can to, to help them be as successful as possible in the city of Lowell. So this is, this is a good thing, and at the very least, having this information out there may show other businesses what the opportunities are, right? May show people who are thinking of opening business what the city can do to help. So I think this is a good piece of, of information to have at hand for these kind of discussions, and I really appreciate the effort that went into this. Thank you.
Mr.
Counselor Mercia, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager. Were these businesses, businesses that had to apply for the help? They had to apply?
Thank you, Counselor Mercia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, they do. They are competitive grants, but they, they, we, they do range from, you know, from startups to established businesses, from small businesses to large businesses. We have software improvement programs, we have business expansion programs, we have technical assistance. So it is so diverse that there is opportunity for all of them, even if they have to apply.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to thank you for the report. It's an excellent report, and it's amazing to show the world that Lowell is welcoming new businesses. I'm particularly very proud of the acre. There's 17 businesses out of that besides the downtown, and it's a very small area of the acre, but there's a lot of diverse businesses, restaurants and shops and markets and all of that. So my only comment, lastly, is that, is that a way we can find out, are these, some of, are these businesses still in business or still opening, or some of them are no longer around? So it would be nice to, to know if we get, they, they get all the support from us, they still in the business. That's all. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilors, I'm very proud of the economic development team for this. You know, there are some people saying that, well, they didn't know this was happening. We had, even some of these councils, some of the, some of the men and women sit, you know, sit in front of you here, a lot of you made those phone calls, and EcoDev actually was out knocking on doors to make sure that people understood, stood this. We tried at the very best to break through barriers of, of language, which, as I, as I look around, many councilors here did that. So this is a huge victory, a huge win. And counsel, quite frankly, as I look through most of these businesses, I'm proud to say that I've been there or know about or see them and know them. But this is a really, as Counselor Janess had stated earlier, this is a pretty big accomplishment for our EcoDev Department, Department of Planning and Development, and I just want to say thank you very much to the council for supporting this from the ARPA side, but a big shout-out goes to DPD and our real, honestly, the community development, economic development team for making this happen, and some of those folks that are right here in front of us, helping us talk to some of the, the business owners to let them know that this was really a grant opportunity. This was an opportunity for everyone to enjoy. So thank you all very much.
Motion response B. Cameras lighting to the garages. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Terry Ryan and Connor Baldwin. I know that it's Terry's who put this report together, but Connor just takes the credit for it. Anyhow, appreciate the report, so appreciate the report, and, you know, and it's very encouraging that, you know, that, which I also urge my colleague to support, 7.5 vote, so that the parking director, Terry Ryan, can use that money to purchase what needed, cameras and additional, you know, lighting within the city garage. So a great, great thing. I'm glad that this is all coming in the same time to do this. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we suspend the rules and bring in 7.5, the vote that accompanies this?
You got it.
7.5.
Motion, bring 7.5 out of order. Counselor Getche, is that your idea? That goes to, and then, secured by Counselor Getche, bring 7.5 vote to transfer, all the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes. 7.5 a vote, transfer $1.1 million from Parking Enterprise Fund. City Council, vote to transfer funds from Parking Enterprise Fund to FY25 parking operations budget to finance various capital improvements to municipal garages. The motion to approve. The Counselor Noon, secured by Counselor Yem. Counselor Janess.
Just a quick question. What will be left in terms of retained earnings for the Parking Enterprise Fund after this, after we execute this?
CFO?
This will clear the retained earnings for the year. So what will be left will be any operating surplus, and if there's a deficit, it will, you know, it will be subsidized by the general fund, but the, the answer is zero. This is the balance of the retained earnings for FY2024's operations.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
So, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about elevators at the Downs Garage. We're talking about the system that includes ticket dispensers, card readers, gates at the early, the Roy and the lower locks. Will there actually be any money left for cameras?
CFO?
Yes, 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 he said. Thank you.
Roll call. I'm sorry, Counselor Getche.
One question through you to CFO Baldwin. It said at the beginning you had 2.5 million, and then it says that you took out 1.1. Is 1.4 left in cash? Or am I reading the retained free cash? Wrong.
CFO, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Counselor, what you're referring to is the amount, unless you're reading the retained earnings calculation sheet that's included with the, yeah. So the, the beginning, it's the beginning cash. This is sort of a balance sheet for FY, FY2024, for the 2025 retained earnings calculation. It's the certification form that the Department of Revenue uses and gives back to us when they're done with the certification. The beginning is the beginning cash, that's the 2.5 million, but if you look further down on the schedule, it's the $1,140,031. So I was mistaken before, there would be $31 left in, in retained earnings.
Buy some stickers. Roll call.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getche.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Less than 11 years.
Communications for the city manager, motion response C. City investments with attachments. Counselor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to thank all the department heads for this excellent, excellent motion response. The spirit of the motion was to have the city manager outline the process in which city funds, taxpayer money, if you will, distributed into local financial institutions. And what a, what an outstanding, detailed report. It's curious to know that the, how taxpayer money are deposited into local banks. It is an open and fair bidding process, but the state law further requires that invested funds are placed in the highest possible rate of interest reasonably available, taking into account safety, liquidity, and yield. So that's a good process to know. But with that being said, we still managed to pay, I guess, patronize, if you will, a lot of local banks, Eastern Bank, Enterprise, Lowell Five, take the lion's share of the storage of the taxpayer money, which is great news. Mr. Mayor, through you to the auditor, Kelly Oakes. Kelly, if you could, I'm extraordinarily pleased that the interest rates that the city is getting on some of this money, how is that, how is that so possible? It seems to be very competitive out there.
Thank you. Yes, so the interest rate environment over the last, I don't know, two years or so has been very, very favorable, and we earning rates, I think, you know, in the mid-fives for quite some for quite some time. The rates have come down a bit, but we're still seeing rates in the mid-fours.
Yeah, very profitable, to say the least. Now, let me ask you this, how come there's credit unions? What's the deal with credit unions? How come we're not utilizing them? Are they not getting engaged with the process, or what's the deal there? To CFO Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So under the Massachusetts general laws, municipalities are prohibited from investing with credit unions. There is, and you'll see on the schedule that's attached with the report, we do have some of the student activity money in Jendar Credit Union, but that, technically, that money belongs to the students, so the provisions of the banking statutes don't attach. There have been several initiatives over the years by the legislature to allow credit unions in to the, what's called the legal list. There's a certain number of investment vehicles that municipalities are prohibited to invest in. Credit unions are not one of them. There has been lots of advocacy at Beacon Hill, but it's never, it's never taken, it's never been signed into law, I should say.
Oh, very interesting. Thank you. I think they'd be offering very competitive rates as well, so it's unfortunate they're not in the mix. They've been such good community players, and it's unfortunate they're not involved in the process. But thank you for that information. Now, if you could elaborate a little bit, Connor, as to the, with, you know, the lion's share of the idle cash sits in the MMDT fund to the tune of about $57 million with the high, obviously, it's the highest yielding. This seems rather intentional, if you will, where it's, again, probably the highest rate, one of the highest rates on the board where most of the money is. So that seems to be advantageous and no mistake. Can you describe what that account is all about, MMDT?
I would ask the Treasurer, Ted Panagiotopoulos, who's here.
Oh, thank you.
And can, but we've had a lot of success when Ms. Oaks was the Treasurer, and now with Ted at the helm, using the MMDT.
Well, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Please.
Yeah, well, MMDT is a state-sponsored investment pool that over 500 state agencies use and over 37 states in the country use. So it's basically one of the predominant institutions that municipalities use to the money. And so because of the yield and the rates that they provide, they're much higher than the bank rates generally.
Yep, I can see that. Well, thank you, Mr. Treasurer, and I want to say you've done a phenomenal job with this financial jockeying, if you will, to shifting, you know, idle cash to the most highest yielding accounts to benefit the taxpayers, to the tune, I will add, of about $15 million in interest in the last two years. And granted, ARPA money was, played a role into that, and that will not be much going forward. But, Mr. Manager, I do want to thank you, what I'll call a dream team, your financial team, Treasurer, Ted Panagiotopoulos, Auditor Kelly Oaks, Connor Baldwin, collectively working as one unit. Money's constantly coming in, constantly going out, and to amass that kind of interest money, I am thrilled, and the taxpayers should be as well. Know in the name of transparency that this money is, you were great guardians of taxpayer money. Shifting such profit is once again phenomenal. So I couldn't be more pleased, so thank you for the report, Mr. Treasurer. It is great news, and, Mr. Manager, thank you to your team and everyone involved on this detailed reporting. And again, the final product here, again, 15 million in interest, I'm impressed, to say the least, and it's great news for the taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Panagiotopoulos. I know you came back from your second job washing dishes at the Athenian for taking the time here tonight, so. Just a quick question on actual receipts. On 2023, we had 5.7, and then this year was 8.9 for 2024, but the correlation between the surplus and the deficit is off a little bit. Can you just explain to the council why is that?
Yeah, the estimates are, they're just projections of what we expect to make in interest, so they're not, there's nothing that, you know, we can't certainly, we can't definitively project what the interest rates will be. So we, in essence, conservatively project what we expect the interest rates to be. We use a, just the run rates and expectations of whether the interest rate will continue to rise or decrease.
Wouldn't the projection though be a little bit higher than the 3.4? I mean, looking at the prior year, you're almost equal, but now you're looking at a $5 million difference?
Right. Well, as you can see, in 2023, we made 5.7, so we carried that over into 2024 expecting similar rates.
Right.
They actually went higher.
It went higher?
In 2024. They peaked at 5.65% in 2024, and they're as low as 4% now, so.
Understood.
So they're starting to.
All right, I'll let you, I'll let you get back to your second job. Thank you.
Motion to accept a place to file by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Janess, all the fierce CI, post motion passes. 6.2 Communication, resignations of members from various boards and commissions. The motion to accept a place to file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Dakota, all the fierce CI, post motion passes. 6.3 Communications. Reapportments to various boards and commissions for the following. Paul Paralais, Ventures Commission, Beth Noel, Lowell Cultural Council, Kathleen Cohen Leather, Board of Health, and Keshidi Karak, Lowell Cultural Council. Yeah, motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Yem. Roll call.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchey.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
11 yeas.
6.4 Communication, City Manager requests approval of our state travel one Lowell Public Department. The motion to adopt by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Getchey. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchey.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
11 yeas.
Votes from the City Manager, 7.1, vote to accept a gift of $2,000 from Lowell Five Bank. Motion to approve by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Noon.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to bundle 7-1 to 7-4?
About 7-1 to 7-3.
It's fine by me.
7-1, accept gift of $2,000 from Lowell Five Bank. 7-2, accept expand $4,000 Library Explore Grant. 7-3, vote to accept, expand, apply $375,000 One Stop for Growth Grant. Motion to accept by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Dakota. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchey.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
11 yeas.
6.4 Communication, City Manager requests approval of our state travel one Lowell Public Department. The motion to adopt by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Getchey. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchey.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
11 yeas.
Votes from the City Manager, 7.1, vote to accept a gift of $2,000 from Lowell Five Bank. Motion to approve by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Noon.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to bundle 7-1 to 7-4?
About 7-1 to 7-3.
It's fine by me.
7-1, accept gift of $2,000 from Lowell Five Bank. 7-2, accept expand $4,000 Library Explore Grant. 7-3, vote to accept, expand, apply $375,000 One Stop for Growth Grant. Motion to accept by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Dakota. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchey.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
11 yeas.
6.4, vote to authorize payment of bills incurred in excess of appropriations. The motion to accept by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this matter.
Counselor Dakota recuses himself. Any questions? Counselor Getchey.
Sure. Through you to the School Financial Officer. Welcome. Congratulations on your new position, but I think you have your hands full. I mean, when you look at this, you go back to FY22, and, you know, it's not a lot of money. One of them is the transportation cost of $110,000, which didn't have a PO, didn't have any kind of bidding process at all was done on that. I can't support that. I would never support that. I think that's something that has to go to the city solicitor, as I said last time, and they need to negotiate back and forth and see. Someone should not render services without that, especially going over that amount of money for the period of time that it was.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, thank you for the question, Counselor. So my name's Derek Pinto. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Finance for Lowell Public Schools. So I do want to preface my comments by just saying that the LPS Finance Department personnel understand that submitting unpaid prior year expenses or expenses incurred without appropriation is generally discouraged, but it remains a necessary part of the cleanup process for Lowell Public Schools. I have a memo prepared that had some additional information that I submitted to our school committee and wanted to share with the council this evening, if that's okay. And so, Counselor, I did hear your question. If I could have the grace of just another minute or two, I did want to let the council and everybody in attendance know that we do recognize the importance of being good stewards of the public trusts and the funds that have been provided to educate and provide services to the children that attend Lowell Public Schools. So we have been working diligently to achieve a negligible balance on these outstanding prior year expenses going forward. With regard to the expense in question, that's the Brazukina Transportation, I believe you're referring to, the $110,000. So I do have additional information to provide to you on that, and that's that we were not the initiating district. This was an item that was, it was a cost share that was initiated by Boston Public Schools, and so we weren't required to put this one out to bid. Boston was to submit their collection of bids to us, which they did not do. So I did want to, I did want to let you know also that we are working to verify expenses. So I think there's the narrative out there that we are just paying invoices as they turn up, but I did want to let you know that we are pushing back on invoices that we receive outside the fiscal year. We need to determine that those services are warranted, they need to be validated, we need to make sure that the details line up with the contracts, and we need to validate the invoices before we move towards paying anything. So we do also have a couple of challenges that we face, right? So we want to make sure that our cost center managers, our site principals have access to the financial system because we've tasked them with managing those budgets, and so we think it's important that they're able to see their budgets. So we're working on that, as well as getting contracts through the contract process. So we're working diligently, cooperatively, collaboratively with the city to get that done.
Counselor Getchey, anything else?
I do. So I read your response to the school committee. We've been at this for some time with the former CFO on the school side. When you talk about that transportation that you say Boston had, your response is McKinley Vento Transportation Service, services for Lowell students placed in Boston, but it clearly states in Chapter 30, it says if a school district procures services or services used for both special ed or, and other students, then those supplies or services must be procured in accordance with 30B, which there is an overlap in that. So that whole $110,000 was not procured for just special needs students, they were homeless students, as has been said multiple times. And on here, we have it saying $110,000, but Boston procured it. When Boston procures something, we still need to have POs in place to pay Boston. We didn't have any of that in place, and that's a major problem on procurement wise, and that's why we have the solicitor. It seems to me that the school department does not like, prior to you, I can only, I'm talking about FY22, 23, and 24, when you weren't here. It seems like some people in the school department just felt like, I am not going to listen to the city solicitor and I'm going to do what I want. And it's basically in the Vermont one where it's the initiative, it says out of district student tuition for SY23, school year 23 and 24, contract was initiated but not approved by the city solicitor. Why should we okay that when they're not even listening to the city solicitor or even the auditor, because I've spoken to the auditor on these things prior to you being here? I am not comfortable with doing that, and I won't do that until we get a report back from the city solicitor saying that all obligations are off us when it goes over $100,000. As you know, in procurement world, an RFP has to be done, and you have trends of trending over $100,000 in all your transportation, or you can get a waiver if no one bids, and we haven't seen any of that with any of the packets that have been, and it's basically the same packet that we've received. So I think that when you look at this, something has to be done with the city solicitor on at least three of them. The others I have no problem with. A $300 bill, I agree with you, I've never once sat here and ever once said that a service wasn't rendered and you're trying to pay it. That never came out of anybody in this council chamber. What was said is you're not following procurement based off of our procurement officer, our auditor, or our city solicitor, and it's reckless over there with the way they're not doing POs.
So I do think, so thank you very much for that. I do have further information to furnish on the Vermont Permanency Initiative. So the vendor had provided services in the year previous, and things were okay with them. They were onboard with the contract language. In this instance, the vendor refused to sign the agreement as they were in disagreement with some of the language this time around. So they were working with our legal services team between them and our city solicitor and never came to an agreement. In the meantime, services were provided, contract wasn't signed. So I just wanted to provide that further context.
I spoke to the city solicitor, and that's not his take on it, but through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor, is that your take on this bill? Because I've asked about these bills.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so the, the contract for the, as Mr. Pinto just explained, for the first year where there were services being rendered, that contract didn't make its way to my office. That was being handled on the school side, I guess by their legal services, and that contract was never put into place. I don't know why. The year came and went, and the services were rendered, and that was now after the fact, later on in the process, yes, we were able to get the contract, and we were going through the normal negotiations that will happen with these contracts, but for the year prior, the time had already come and went, and there was not a contract in place.
And that's exactly what I was told. So if there's not a contract in place, how are these vendors rendering service without purchase orders in the tune of $115,000? That's the question. investigating additional unpaid prior year expenses, and that includes the Fall at Aspen. Fall at Aspen, Fred J. Miller, and the University of Massachusetts Lowell, which is on my memo, are all still under investigation. They haven't substantiated their purchases, and they're going to need to do that before we pay. If it's the will of the council, we're happy to tell them to seek an alternative remedy to get paid. You know, if their expense is validated, if they've substantiated, provide validation, services can be confirmed that they were delivered, we can still negotiate a settlement. That's another option. We don't, you know, if it falls outside the fiscal year, I think the vendor does bear some responsibility for that, or we can pay it in full.
There's another one, the Conica one. It has $39,918. It says canceled copier lease agreement. So, if you canceled early, you owed them that money, or were the services?
That's correct. In that instance, as a matter of fact, I was in extensive talks with them. We canceled their agreement, the copiers were not suitable, so they didn't in the end provide the level of service that we needed, and so, we canceled that contract, we contracted with somebody else. That one is actually going to be withdrawn from the bad bills list. So, I did want to furnish you with some additional information in that there's a couple of items that we have withdrawn post further investigation. So, they include Conica Minolta. It was determined that we.
How many do you have to withdraw?
I'm sorry?
How many do you have to withdraw?
Three. Conica Minolta.
Are there going to be any more, or are you positive with just these three?
So, at this time, it's those three with the information that I have on it.
Is it appropriate to take a vote tonight then, or you want to come back?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Which three?
Which three? It was Conica Minolta, T-Mobile, and Fred Miller. So, Conica Minolta in the amount of $39,000 plus, T-Mobile in the amount of $8,000, and Fred Miller in the amount of $2,900 some odd dollars.
My concern is that if we're signing off on these bills that are over $100,000 and there's no RFP, it's something that legal department should be sending all of us to say it is okay to do that with the auditor. To me, we're in violation by authorizing these payments over $100,000 that are in direct violation of 30B without the proper procurement procedures that you took, that the school department took. And that's my opinion on it. I won't support anything that violates that piece, and when you look at some of your ones that are over $10,000, you have the same issues where POs weren't open, and how do you get to this point where you're not even getting the three quotes to get the PO? So, who is in charge of these things and going forward and saying you can spend, you know, over $10,000 and just say, we don't need three quotes, we don't need anything, and here's your bill?
So, right now, I'm in charge of it. So, the buck stops at my office, and so, we've worked actively for, with, you know, to implement some controls and process improvements. So, I do want to highlight that we have a full team in place, which we did not have prior. We still only have one person handling AP largely at this time, but you'll note in the memo that I shared with you that we've created some AP support, and so, we've expanded support within the business office, and we got dedicated staff reviewing accounts payable and that email inbox daily and so on. In addition, we've got our AP Dropbox, so we've tried to streamline the process, the submission of POs and invoices from schools to the business office. We've got monthly reporting that's going on, so we are sharing monthly year-to-date reports along with purchase order reports to the school sites. We've held training, so an in-person training at central office for school-based administrative assistance to update them on the procurement and accounts payable process, and we are communicating with our vendors frequently. So, just to share with you, the purchasing training had to do with requisition PowerPoints, which we shared with administrators and administrative assistants. With principals, we did budget management for school leaders, and we have furnished them with the purchasing manual and guidelines. That's the purchasing desktop guide through the city of Lowell. So, this is all taking place, this all happened and happening now in an effort to reduce those outstanding prior year expenditures.
And I thank you for this. We've had so far the superintendent here, and we've had the past CFO here, and you're the first one who has come up with some sort of solution. So, I'm hoping that we don't see you next year on, you know, on little things like $600, I get it, the bills just float through, you got to get something done. It makes a lot of sense, anything under $10,000. But I would like to make a motion that we withdraw the transportation one for Pekesian Nick's Luxury in the Vermont Initiative until the city solicitor comes back and says it's okay to pay them, because I am not willing to put my name on the violations that went on without the city solicitor saying, look, it's okay to pay them. And I don't have any letter, and we've asked this the last time, Mr. Mayor, and we didn't even get a letter, so.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Counsel Robinson. Mr. Solicitor, is it legal for us to do it tonight?
Oh, and also remove the three that the CFO asked to remove.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it would be legal to do this tonight as the services have been certified. With that in front of us, we can at least feel comfortable in saying that the services were provided. Any other, any other issues with this, for lack of a better term, it's already happened. So, there really is no further effect, albeit a negative effect. It's sort of what's done is done at this point. So, if the council wanted to, they certainly, they can.
No liability on the council's behalf?
No.
Whether the services are provided or not, I would like the city solicitor to put it in writing to us so we have it documented. So, next time we come to the same thing, we can point to it, and I'm hoping that that can come back that way.
So, the motion was read by counsel to get you to take the transportation ones out and then to remove the three that CFO requested.
In the Vermont one, yep.
Right, yeah. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Rock?
No.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
No.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota? Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
No.
Counsel Noon?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
That's the amendment, you don't need two-thirds in the amendment. Now, you need to vote.
So, will the vote pass or not?
The vote, vote passes, yeah.
Thank you. So, now, we need what, Mr. Clerk?
Now, you need to vote on, as amended.
On the bad bills?
On the bad bill as amended.
All right, that's been first and second already?
It has. I would do another first and second as amended, Mr. Clerk.
By Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Mercia, roll call.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota? Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Eight orders to the city manager, 8.1 order of sixty-day trial, waiver for reading is screened by title, motion to adopt by Counsel Mercy, second by Counsel Janess. I do have a quick question, Mr. Machado. I was told that Drakeet Street would be part of the sixty-day trial for a handicap sign. I did not see it on the agenda for tonight.
I'll look into that. We'll get it off next week.
All right, thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
8.2 order taking acceptance of Delaware Avenue, first reading, meaning a motion to refer a public hearing on March 18th, 2025 by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Scott, also fierce AI, opposed, motion passes. Nine reports on our subcommittee, 9.1 housing.
Next week, Mr., next week.
You got it, Council Chairman. 10 petitions, 10.1, six property damage claims, motion to refer a law department for report recommendation by Counsel Mercia, second by Counsel Janess, also fierce AI, opposed, motion passes. 10.2 miscellaneous, Jose Cervantes request permission to address council regarding plans to repair ADA compliant sidewalks throughout the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, his staff, and the rest of the council. I put this petition forward. My daughter became, she had suffered an injury in December. She's in a walker, now she's in crutches. You know, it's one of those things where you don't realize something until it actually directly affects you. I started talking to people in the community, and there's a concern on the ADA compliance throughout the city, whether it's the sidewalks or, I know that was what the petition was about, the sidewalks, but, you know, I never really realized that something as simple as the height of a paper towel dispenser, how much of an impact that has in somebody with a disability's life, you know? So, I would like for the city manager, not for me, but for the community, to see what we are doing to address these concerns, and on the back end, this petition was also put forth because there were so many people that addressed these concerns, and I wanted to show the community, keep it brief, it's late, everybody wants to go home, but I wanted to show the community how easy it is to put a petition forth and have you guys work for us, you know? Help you guys help us. If we don't have our voices heard, how do we expect you to know what we need at the end of the day? So, this isn't about me, obviously, the ADA compliance, but this is to try to bring the community here. So, thank you for your time, and, you know, hopefully, we can get some positive feedback on what the city's doing to address these concerns that the community has.
Thank you. Motion to refer.
Can I speak on that, Mr. Mayor?
Motion to refer to city manager for report recommendation by Counsel Mercy, second by Counsel Janess, Counsel Gitchia.
Mr. Mayor, over two and a half years ago, this body came in here, and we talked about sidewalks. We pressed the city engineer to take steps to make valuable improvements, and she had gone out and had a rate study done for sidewalks, ADA compliances. We spent millions of dollars and put it there for sidewalks, and it's part of our Chapter 90 funds, and we've invested heavily. We share your concerns to the resident. We also share your frustrations when you look at them, and all of us were in here at that time, and we all supported getting better sidewalks, and we're moving in that direction. But like any major city that has had infrastructure that's been neglected for so long, it can't be all done in one year, and I'm sorry for what happened to your daughter, and I hope she feels better, but at the end of the day, the neglect has been there, and we have pushed the city engineer to straighten out a lot of those things, and I thank you, Mr. Manager, and your staff, and the city engineer for hard work getting it done. And if you look at the upcoming projects that you just released a couple of weeks ago, you'll see a lot of that's in those areas. So, thank you again for coming out. I agree with you, everybody in here should represent the people, and I think we try to do that, but outcomes in government, as you're outlining, they take time because of the expense piece to it. If we could have fixed them all in that week and had the money to do it, I promise you, we'd have all brand-new sidewalks, but there's a, there's a lot of moving pieces. But thank you again.
No, and I understand, sir, and, you know, that was one last thing, and that was the big thing, you know, that I want people to understand that, you know, through the manager, anytime you need, you feel something's not being addressed, it takes five minutes. Yeah, you have to write by hand, and who does that anymore? But it takes five minutes, file a petition, come here.
I promise you, in the last three years, there has not been more motions filed by any public body in the history of the city of Lowell, and the manager and his staff will tell you, if a resident has a problem, there's 11 of us who will pick up the phone and try to alleviate the issues. Some issues are a lot bigger and take a little bit longer. We're not going to get rid of the smell of Duck Island that quick. We're not going to be able to pave all the roads and make them gold, but we definitely work for you, and I think all of us have.
Thank you. I needed that to be reassured to the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, three to the council. I just want to remind the council that, yes, we do have a tremendous backlog, we've talked about, to the tune of about $65 million of monies that we have not spent over the many, many years, maybe a decade or so. But this council also increased from 5% to 7% the amount of money out of capital. We have another bid that's going to be going out in the next couple of weeks. Talk about paneling, you know, the different panels throughout the city. That bid will be going out. As the council knows, we had just gotten some money back in regards to the difference between concrete and hot top and the different pricing. So, sir, this absolutely is something that we have been concentrating on. This council has actually taken horizontal construction, which is all of our roadways, bridges, and sidewalks to a new level. So, we do, you know, feel for you, hear you loud and clear, and as I see you, we can talk about any of these issues in the future, but I appreciate you bringing your concerns forward.
Thank you, sir, and thank you in part for the community too, not just for me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Robinson?
Through you to the manager. You know the off-ramps, ADA compliant, on and off-ramps for the sidewalks? I'm hearing from quite a bit of people that the plastic padding that went down, it doesn't hold up. I don't know any other options like composite or something maybe to look at when we do start piecing this together, but they said after this winter, those plastic paddings just disintegrate, you know? You're scraping the ice out of those areas routinely, so, thank you.
10.3 miscellaneous, John Lepan, request permission to speak to city council regarding parking issues and fines tickets in the city.
Thank you very much for hearing me, City Council. I'm basically have this petition about the parking situation on 131 Mount Washington Street, Mount Vernon Street, and surrounding area, all areas with student petition, I'm sorry, this is the first time for me, with the parking emblems on the pole. It's been an expense that I've had to endure for the last 29 years. When I first bought the house back in 1997, it was $80,000. I dumped my life into it and made it a home for my family. Shortly thereafter, my children, who quickly got cars, got tickets on a regular basis, we dealt with that, we worked with, we worked it out, we met with some of the parking people, and they sort of backed off. I don't have a driveway, and I do take care of the entire front of my house. I take the snow blower, I go across the street, my neighbor's house, I really take a lot of pride in Lowell. I love this city. When I, I'm a small contractor, I do basement waterproofing. No, I'm not pitching for the water problem you had at those buildings, but that said, I spent a lot of time working and then coming home and doing work in my own home. So, while I'm out and about, like Newton, Wellesley, all them, I see their parking issue. All the surrounding areas, oh, God, I'm brain dead now, Somerville, Cambridge, Arlington, people satellite park, and what, and why those towns charge so much is because people will park in front of their house, Uber or drive their bike into Boston, and avoid paying $400, $500 for parking. So, it feels to me Lowell sort of adapted that with the college kids. Now, I understand those signs were supposed to be based for the college, supposed to be for the college kids to keep them from just parking willy-nilly all over the place. In the last couple of years, there's these parking, satellite parking, parking garage structures for Lowell, so now our streets are basically opened up. I have pictures in my phone and pictures that I've developed. My street's basically empty during the day. In the beginning of 2023, we started to get a series of tickets, me, my girlfriend, my son, his girlfriend, into the tune of almost $500. I complained, I talked to Mr. Yem, I talked to Mr. Machado, they pulled us into a room, and they gave us a yearly pass. As soon as the yearly pass was up, we started to get hammered at the beginning of this year. '23, when I walked into the parking department, I simply said, what's going on? I was told by one of the ladies behind the desk, my girlfriend can't sleep over my house. And I said, wow, that's different. I thought we lived in a free society. I thought, I'm not under rent control, I'm not in housing, I don't understand why my girlfriend can't sleep over my house. Now, she lives in Drakeet, she has some health issues, she likes to stay at the house, and when we don't get along, she goes back home. That said, it seems to be, it seems to be that the city is taking this position that if she doesn't want to sign up and live in the city, that it's some way, what I was told by the parking department, that she's just trying to avoid insurance. That's not the case. So, I realize that they just passed a law or a rule that it's going to be $120 for the parking plackets, and even though they do work now, apparently, you can call the police, and you can get your cars towed or ticketed, I really feel the police have better use of their time. I suggest this, we make a 1-800 number, so we can call this number, and whomever's sitting at the parking department, we can just say, hey, come over here and ticket this person. If they feel he's in violation for too long, they can have him towed. So, this would save, this would make sure you guys get extra revenue, you're not losing anything. I don't want the plackets to come down, I just don't think the people, the hard-working taxpayers of Lowell should be subjected to constant tickets. Now, I realize we were, we got this lifelong ticket for our car, and I knew every time you got a new car, you have to pay for a new ticket. Now, it's going to be every year, to the tune of either $30 or $50, I'm not sure exactly which one it is. But that said, now, to just live in Lowell, to park my own car in front of my own house, a house that I pay $8,100 in taxes, now I have to pay an additional fee just to have my car out there. And now, it's going to be a booklet of tickets where it's a dollar a guest. I have had countless parties at my house back in the day, and when I say parties, I'm talking birthday parties, spaghetti dinners, and nothing, it was no big deal. Now, you get nailed every time you're outside. They'll all come over and ticket you. You spend more time at the front of your house while you're entertaining guests, making sure the parking meter's not, parking person's not coming by. If you talk to them, they will be kind enough to say, okay, you know, I understand it's your guest, you're fine. And it just seems to be, it would be as simple as having a phone number to say, hey, these were my guests, we only took, in my, in my spot, I have 50 feet in front of my house, and if I put the cars tight together, I can get four cars, and because we're all a community, I can walk over to my neighbor's house or call them and simply say, hey, can I park in your driveway? Hey, can I park in front of your house? And everybody is all fair and happy about this. No one has a problem. We don't understand why, when there's so much room on the street, Mount Washington Street's a very wide street. It's not like Rock Street or Aiken Street or other streets that have no signs. We seem to be being bombarded by parking tickets. So, my, that's my suggestion. So, we make an eight-hundred number. So, the owners of the house can say, "Hey, look, we're not familiar with the car here." Whomever's out, you know, I understand you're trying to get a staff to work all the way up to ten o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. So, if you get a staff to ten o'clock, then you, you know, instead of them just riding aimlessly around the city, there's a phone number, and the homeowners can simply say, "Hey, there's a car here. It's been here four hours. It's right in front of my house." But a guy with no driveway, you go shopping, you come home, and you have no parking. It's a pain in the ass, excuse the language. It's a pain in the behind. It's just been one thing after another. Now, Terry Ryan today honestly changed my whole view of the parking issue today because I went down there. He was kind enough to talk to me and listen to me. And he took away three tickets that my girl just got. In the course of forty days, she got a hundred and twenty-dollar tickets. And like I said, two thousand and twenty-three, we had well over four hundred dollars worth of tickets. And I understand, all the things I heard tonight here, all the problems you guys have, this is probably miniscule. But I'd like to be able to have my grandchild come to my house from his college. And I can't think of his college's name right now. It's a construction college out of Boston. And Wentworth College. And he would like to visit me. And instead of going upstairs, I have a beautiful man town that you guys would love. It's fifty, forty feet long, twenty-two feet. I got a two-hundred-and-twenty-inch screen TV, karaoke machine, foosball machine, pool table, and I can't use it. I can't invite people over my house. If I invite people over my house, we have to spend lots of time looking out the window. When is it where you own your own house, you're parked right in front of your house, you're not taking up any other person's spot? How can you call it yours when you're constantly paying tickets for it? That's my complaint. I know it's not as big as some of the problems in the city. But my daughter stopped coming over with my grandchildren. My girlfriend is threatening not to come over anymore because she's done paying for parking tickets. And if it wasn't for Terry being nice today, we were on the fence today. She's also going through the big C. And I'm not throwing that out there, but the last two tickets I got was me bringing her into Boston to go get an ECHO CAT scan. And it's like insult to injury. We come home, I take care of all my property. I pay the eighty-one hundred dollars in taxes, and I got a forty-dollar ticket on there. So, it's, a booklet will give me a, for a booklet, I get ten tickets. I'll have, they're a dollar apiece. Apparently, you can put it on a car. But then you've got to navigate your phone. How many people here can quickly navigate their phone? At my age, it takes me, you know, I've got to find a little kid. Here you go. Fix this for me. And now, we're going to have to go on our phone and figure it out. Hopefully, it went through, and then we're going to put this on. And after the ten tickets, we're going to have to go get another ten tickets. So, we're literally paying to have guests to live in Lowell. Where is the community here? I mean, I can see if I didn't have, if I didn't live here my whole life, which it has been, I could see maybe I just moved in, and I got to pay my dues for a little while. It just doesn't seem right that I'm constantly worrying about tickets. I think either give us some plackets and make an eight-hundred number or make a number that we can dispute tickets so we don't have to go down to the parking department and take up valuable time, and we don't have to call the police to get a simple person, you know, come over. What happens with the police a lot, they'll come over, they'll go, "Well, I'm not going to give him a ticket. This is a parking issue. We'll see if he's still here in an hour." Meantime, my groceries are across the street in my, you know, across the street from my house. And so, I can either start loading them or I can, you know, pound sand. So, that's my complaint. That's my issue. I don't know if I've solved anything here. I just, I will tell you this. My neighbors that I've spoken to all say they weren't aware of the changes. They weren't aware that everything's gone up. And they're all, I've talked to them. They're all saying, "If you make a petition, and we'll sign it, we'll sign it." I have at least thirty people who'll do this. I don't really have the time. I run a small, little waterproofing business. I don't feel like knocking on doors. I would just like a common-sense approach. Why don't we, you know, if we're legitimate Lowell people, or you have a house in Lowell, you can prove you pay taxes, give us a phone number. We can call and say, "Hey, that ticket you gave my daughter, you should, you should take that away." And someone says, "Okay, well, who are you? What's the number we gave you?" It could be a special little number so no person can just call in and say, you know, "This is my daughter." And then, as far as the calling for people to get tickets, you could say, "Well, you have to stick around while the parking person comes out there so you're not giving phantom calls just to get people in trouble." I thank you very much, and I'll go from there.
Motion to refer to City Manager for, by Counsel Dakota, second by Counsel Janess. All in fear of AI, opposed motion passes. John Lepan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best speaker of the night. Great job. I think he's a comedian. That is tremendous. No, that was beautiful.
Can I just make one comment on?
Counsel Scott, go ahead.
I just, I just have a couple of comments on what you mentioned because we have this conversation in the back central neighborhood meetings. They're trying to go, they're talking about going in the direction of having these stickers, bringing them back. They used to have it, and they got rid of them. So, I know it's a hard balance between, you know, you want the spaces reserved for the neighbors that live there, and there's a certain group that wants to keep them. So, I don't know if there's any way planning can kind of maybe revisit, you know, whether or not the program's still working within the neighborhoods, that they still want them there. And then, also, my other question is around the visitor passes, going down and getting a ticket book, and around the yearly passes, going down to the office. I don't know why these aren't things that are done online at this point in time. I don't know if they can purchase them through the Passport app, you know, a visitor pass. They should be able to enter the license plate in, and it should be able to be automated somehow. So, that's something I think we definitely need to look at. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. You got it. Moving on to eleven, City Council Executive Session. To consider and discuss negotiations relative to ACID parcels two, three, four, five, with polling companies, public discussion, which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position. The motion to enter Executive Session adjournment session by Counsel Gitchia, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Announcements, Counsel Mercia?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We offer our speedy recovery and best wishes to Jim Haley, who took a toss, and he looks like he was sparring with Muhammad Ali. So, we offer our well wishes to him for a speedy recovery.
Good. We hope to see him this Sunday, Counselor, March ninth, at St. Patrick's for kickoff of Irish Culture Week. There's a nine-thirty pre-mass Irish concert, ten o'clock mass, and a parade and a festival back at City Hall at eleven fifteen, followed by breakfast or brunch back at the rectory.
And there's a Dwelling House of Hope that's having a Mighty Movers Women's Award celebration, celebrating International Women's Day. That's Saturday, this Saturday, March eighth, starting from twelve to three. Karen Frederick is the guest speaker, and that's on one-twenty-five Mount Hope Street. So, if any women or even men want to go, that's, that's very nice. Thank you.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements. One is that the Clemente Park Phase One Public Meeting is tomorrow night, March fifth, six-thirty to seven-thirty at the Boys and Girls Club. It's to talk about the renovation of the park. And the park will be closed during the renovation from May twenty-twenty-five to November twenty-twenty-five. And last but not least, we want all to wish our manager a happy, healthy birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. Manager.
Now, I can officially say you're older than me.